Nobody, nobody up there believes that.
Yeah.
Good afternoon and welcome to your unified government. This is a special session for today that we'll be conducting. Our four sort of business is the sheriff and then we'll get into the administrator's agenda. Before I call this meeting order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely as well as onsite. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I'll now call this meeting into order and ask the clerk to announce the meeting in roll call.
Good afternoon. You are hereby notified. I have called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, August 4, 2022 at 4:30 PM in the commission chambers located on the lobby level of the municipal office building for presentation by the Wyandotte County Sheriff and presentation of the 2023 proposed budget. Roll call. Johnson. Kane. Markley. Stites. Davis. Bynum. Burrows. Townsend. McKernan.
Here.
Ramirez. Garner.
Here. Thank you clerk. At this time, I'll now recognize Sheriff's topic, who's our Wyandotte County Sheriff for a brief presentation for about 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commission. And this, this will be brief. I appreciate the invitation from the mayor to come back and just answer any questions and follow-ups that you may have to my previous presentation last week. And I do have a couple of updates that I will share with you guys. So you have that information, particularly as you move in to the budget and it being presented and eventually adopted. So if you recall, the two things I brought to you last time was the cadet program and a consideration for some, some pay parity between the sheriff's office and the PD. So I'll start with the cadet program. I don't really have anything new to add to that, but I would entertain any questions or any follow-up that you guys, that you guys may have to that. If there's anything. Anything you thought of between then and now? Okay. And then the other thing was I had asked that you guys, you know, look at as you move towards the budget and adopting a budget and the budget cycle, how we could potentially move in some form or fashion to address the, the pay disparity between my, my department and the police department. And we kind of went over how that, how that relates and the issues I have with hiring. And I told you, there was a couple of numbers I didn't have. I do have now. And so I can tell you, I'm 30 deputies short. And I am 13 correction specialists short. So about 43. That's a huge number. And so that is definitely something I'm trying to address. And that's why I'm here, you know, a second time to, to give you an opportunity to ask those questions. Last meeting, I did not give you the, the estimated budget impact. You know, if you were to do that, it's about 2.2 million. It's a big number and I get that. I recognize that. It's not lost on me. But what I will tell you is that's a big number. My shortage is a big number. And it directly relates back to the safety of my deputies, the safety of everybody in that building. And I'll just highlight unfortunately, two, two articles that, that really, you know, kind of bring that home. August 2nd, 2022, North Carolina deputy dies one day after being shot serving papers. He was out serving civil papers, which is something my guys and gals do every single day. And then July 21st, 2022, slain Michigan jail corporal's family sues the sheriff's office for wrongful death. Those are things that, you know, unfortunately, we're in a business that's, it's, it's dangerous. It's dangerous every single day, whether they're in the facility, whether they're working in a patrol function, serving civil papers. I think these two articles drive that point home. And so, you know, as you look at the numbers and you look at the budget and you look at all of those things, if at any point you think, well, you know, they're a different job, the PD and the sheriff's office, 100% they're a different job. But they're not any less dangerous, I guess is what I'm getting at. And this is something I want to, I want to get to. I want to, I want to address it in some form or fashion. I get that's a huge number. Again, it's not lost on me. You know, maybe that's something that's broken up over a period of time to address. If that's the direction you guys decide to go, I would just ask sooner than later, because this, this definitely is impacting my ability to hire. And it's, it's, as I told you before, I'm directly competing with the police department, same pool of people, same, same folks looking to get into law enforcement in some form or fashion. And so those are just some numbers I didn't, I didn't give you last time, some I didn't have. And so I appreciate the mayor giving the opportunity to follow up with you. And again, I would answer any questions that you may have as it relates to that.
Thank you, Sheriff Commissioner Markley.
So if there were one position where we could start implementing a change in pay, would you have a recommendation on where we start that?
Well, so for us, you know, a deputy's, deputy's a deputy. There's no different, there's no classification differences there. And, and essentially one's going to affect the other. So if we, if we adjust the deputies' pay, it's going to go up and adjust the commanders appropriately. And so not really, because a deputy is a deputy. It's just across the board. And that number was figured in-house by finance payroll, that's where that name, that number came from. And that was a, that was a complete matching all of my staff, my current staff with current PD salary numbers. So that's where that came from. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff, for coming before us again. My question kind of pigging back off Commissioner Markley's. If you were, because as you said, 2.2, that's a big number for us to figure out as we know, our infrastructure is millions more than that that we need to fix and we need to be putting more into. If you were advising us, what would be in your professional opinion as you run the department, would, should be our first step?
Well, I think you look at how big of a, how big of a bite of that you can take. Again, that's, that's a, that's a huge number to try to swallow at once. How much of it you could take at once? And, and manage and then come up with some plan moving forward to, to address it and, and stick to that plan, whatever it is. Again, sooner than later, I don't think it can be a 10-year plan. It can't even really be a five-year plan. But to break it up in some way that's a little more manageable, yet still begins to address it. And it lets people know that, that you guys are serious about addressing it. And as we look at potential applicants, you know, to be able to tell them, hey, there's a plan in place. The Unified Government is serious about, you know, correcting this and, and giving, giving that priority. And if that's something that we're able to, to get across to applicants, that, that helps also. So I think just having a plan in place and sticking to it.
Okay.
Is what I would ask. Thank you.
Of course. And I, I will say, you know, I'm willing to work with my fellow colleagues and trying to come up with that plan. Um, I know I agree it rather sooner rather than later. So I, I will make that publicly to you that I am willing to work with the rest of the commission to figure it out and see what we can come up with.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKernan. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming back again tonight, Sheriff. This is a question that I meant to ask last time and didn't. So I'll follow up today and I appreciate the opportunity to do it. I know that salary is a big consideration. It's a big number and it's a big part of the decision that people make in terms of coming to work for us. Are there other non-monetary factors or barriers that we could also, or we should also knock down as we seek to improve our recruitment?
Well, as it relates to competition, not necessarily internal competition, because again, you know, benefits are really all the same. You know, the, the contract, the MOUs vary a little bit here and there, but like I, when I presented last time, all that's really the same. Vacation, sick time, benefits, it's across the board. You know, really the, the two things that we get, that kind of the pushback that we get when, when we personally recruit, it's always money. And then those that don't live here, they always bring up, you know, having to move. But factual internal competition, it's the money. I, I would, I would have to say benefits wise, I tell everybody, we have some of the best benefits around. I've been a 18-plus year employee and I just, I think our benefits are amazing. So that's, that's usually a pretty easy sell. That piece of it. Yeah.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner King.
I know we need to do something. We're up here trying to figure out how much that would cost. He's got a calculator. Okay, that's a lie. What, what, give us a bottom line to start with.
Well, I don't know that I can, I don't know that it's for me to say what you can and can't absorb. I mean, I, I haven't even got to hear, you know, the budget. So I don't know. You know, they, they sign their contract. The most recent contract was signed back in December for a three-year contract. And so I don't know that it's for me to say what you could or couldn't do. But sure, if you took that and divided it by three, whatever that is, you know, that would get them there before the termination of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stikes.
Stikes, District 7. So I think since we don't even know what the budget is, I think it makes it tough for us to set up here and try to figure out a number that makes things work for you. I understand the need. I recognize it. And I think that we just need to take into consideration your ask and what it looks like moving forward and how we accommodate and make sure that we're being responsible to those employees like we have done with all the other employees. But I appreciate the presentation and, and so we really know what the budget looks like. I think it makes it tough for us to figure out what we put out there extra right now.
Absolutely.
You have any other comments?
I think just the, the last thing that I would add, you know, I, I just went back and did a real quick search, if you will, 2018 to 2022. You know, 12, 12 incidents that really just stick out, all related to corrections facilities and either folks being assaulted severely, injured severely, killed. And one, it's, one instance, there was 12 detention personnel that were severely beaten. It's just, it, it's a hard job to fill. It's a hard job to do. And I think the first step is recognizing that it's, it's dangerous. And I think once, once we recognize that and know that, at, at least in, in maybe in your mind, it makes it a little, makes it a little more sense when you're looking at that big number. It's a tough job. It really is. And then when you look at, you know, the, the deputy serving the civil paper, because I will say, I get asked on, you know, on occasion, can't you take resources from one part of the agency and, and move them? And we've robbed Peter to pay Paul for too many years, you know, in, in my agency. And, you know, statutorily, there are things that I have to do. And that deputy serving that civil paper was doing something that probably in their state, their sheriff is also statutorily required to do. And so I'm just, I'm out of people to move around and, and, you know, use other places. Again, it's, it's a dangerous job, as is the police department, no doubt about it. You know, we, we see that every single day all over the country. This is probably just maybe a less known issue. And so if nothing else, I bring to light that detention work is, it's not any less dangerous. It's just different. It's a different dangerous. And in order for me to be able to compete in that arena, pay is, is definitely a huge, huge obstacle. So I really do appreciate the entire commission listening, being open. Again, thank you, Mayor, interim county administrator. Thank you. And yeah.
I got a question for you. Commissioner Johnson. Quiet. All these buttons up here. Okay. We'll come back. All right. I, I just got a few questions for you. I just know from my experience, 32 years on the Kansas Police Department and rising through the ranks, I've watched the sheriff's department being asked to take on additional responsibilities. And I know for a while you had a transport, but that had to drop off due to personnel and, and just, you didn't, you, you had no way of doing it. And I know that was brought up by Mayor Harrington last week as well. So that's a service that you can't provide any, any further, but you picked up the parks throughout all of Wyandotte County, which at one time Kansas, Kansas PD handled, at least within the jurisdiction of the Kansas, Kansas Police Department. Now you handle all the parks. And so any violent crimes that may occur, not only do you have to patrol, but you have to follow up on those investigations and take the lead as well. And then now it's my understanding that you picked up Loring, which is an unincorporated area of Wyandotte County. So that, that's an additional ask for our sheriff's department, resources that are limited and you're already short. So you're even far stretched. Also having the necessary patrols in those unincorporated areas as well as being able to be responsive to Bonner Springs and Edwardsville as far as having that, that sheriff coverage as well. Am I correct in, in that statement that, that I'm bringing?
Yes, yes. So when the contract with Loring expired, the sheriff's office picked up the, the coverage when we have people out. You know, we don't run and we don't run patrol from 1 AM to 8 AM. And so the agreement is that the KCK Police Department is helping out during those hours. Again, it's, it's a fairly small workload. It's been more medical fire response than anything. But there has been a couple of fatality accidents there in the last few years. But absolutely, that, that's, that's another just pull on an already strained resource.
And I know you mentioned your, your, your civil services that you provide that's mandatory by Kansas State statute, but then also I believe you do have a small road patrol that does assist KCKPD. I know when I was on the police department, it was a valued resource when we blacked out. And for those who don't know what blackout means, that's where we just don't have any law enforcement officers to send due to the volume of calls from residents. And, and those are prioritized. So the sheriff usually backs up officers or fills in that gap. And so you do have a small road patrol that's available for that as well. And so there are a lot of resources that are necessary to be able to perform the function of sheriff effectively. And, and my opinion that it comes down to safety, not only of the sheriff officers, but then you're also talking about safety within our community. And so I think those are two highlighted things that I'd like to share with this commission and our administrator and staff when we consider budgets, not just now, but even moving forward. And how being shorthanded not only puts a strain on being able to be responsive to our residents, but also potentially could put not just the officers, but our community at a safety risk when you talk about public safety. The other thing is, is I know you mentioned salaries. One thing I didn't hear in that number, that 2 point over $2 million, did that include your command staff as well as your undersheriff and yourself?
So it included up through the undersheriff. I don't know that they included me. Mine was never adjusted even before. So when we did the adjustment back in October, the sheriff's salary wasn't taken to that 85% then. So that's kind of a whole separate ball of wax. But it did, it did go up through the undersheriff, I believe.
And I would just like, I know it's probably inappropriate, you know, maybe not so, but I, I know just your character, you, you're not going to advocate to make sure there's parity with you as well. But I would like to remind the public and this commissioner, our administrator, that historically the sheriff is the top sworn law enforcement official in Wyandotte County. But historically, the sheriff and his deputies have made far less than the Kansas, Kansas Police Department. And being the top law enforcement, sworn law enforcement official in the county, I think that those types of things need to be taken in consideration, especially with the, the type of services that you're being asked to provide and the, the same safety risk to officers and the public safety concerns from the service you provide to our residents. So I just ask that this commission and our administrator, take that in consideration, that parity, in my opinion, if that's the direction this commission chooses to go based off the sheriff's request that, that we, we do it from top or bottom up. And so, and just take a look at that and make sure that we're compensating our law enforcement officials in a way that is equitable.
And I, and I will add that as it relates to me, that was going to be a separate PowerPoint, if you will, at some point to just kind of look at that. My first and foremost was to get this on your radar, on your plate. And then I, I appreciate that. And that's something that at some point here, in the very near future, I will, I will want to discuss, but getting people in and hired is, it's got to be on, on the plate first. So, but yeah, I do appreciate that.
All right. Commissioner Johnson.
I wrote it down this time. Sheriff, again, appreciate coming before us this afternoon. And I believe that you've mentioned this before to us, but I, I want to know, can you ballpark again? How much lower in salary are, per person are we than our competing or other jurisdictions, i.e. Johnson County, other counties?
So I know that Johnson County Sheriff's Office starts, I just had the number the other day. They start higher than us. I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head. We've, we've talked to some deputies out there, you know, about possibly changing teams.
I think it would be good for us to be able to see that in terms of numbers and what that looks like. I think that helps shape the conversation as we talk about where would we, you know, how can we increase, what, what can we do? If we have some real crisp numbers that will tell us what we're dealing with.
Sure.
I think that would help to incent us and motivate us as well.
And I, I would 100% be on. And I I would a hundred percent be on board and I can provide any of that that you would want. The reason I didn't quite honestly this time is because while they they are a competitor, they're not our direct competitor. You know, as it relates to somebody that does, you know, it's required to move here. That that just that takes our our pool down even more.
Right.
And it ends up being, you know, the police department, but a hundred percent.
Right.
I could provide that.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Commissioner Kane. Okay, in the interest of time, we've got to wrap up. Thank you, Sheriff. I'd just like to say that. That I believe that I can speak for most of the commission and our residents, just the ones that I've met. We do support public safety, our police, our fire and our sheriff's officers. And we do value and appreciate the work that you all do. And we thank you all for your service. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you again. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
At this time, we're going to take a short recess and then. Right at five, we will start with our special session on on the budgetary items, so.
Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the twenty twenty three proposed budget. Before I start, I want to thank our chief financial officer, along with the budget staff. Along with Ally Porter, Taylor Wash and the assistants and our intern Jeff, who worked on the budget. And the entire staff who helped provide input through their department directors. We have a lot of people who spent countless hours on this and we could not present this budget to you tonight without all of their help. So we'll first start with our slide that talks about reimagining the next twenty five years and U G Forward. So as we celebrate our twenty five year anniversary of consolidation. U G Forward is our opportunity to reimagine the next twenty five years, looking at D E I F. D for discover, E for evaluate, I for identify, and F for focus. As we look at discover, we talked about discovering new ways to strengthen engagement. We kicked off the twenty twenty three budget process, looking to engage. The community and the commission in new ways. E for evaluate, looking at the current organization and identifying areas of improvement. Identifying economic development opportunities and finally F focusing on superior customer service. Next, please. So as you can see from this timeline, we have spent a lot of time gathering feedback, starting in February. We hosted three dot talk town halls, conducted a community survey. Led multiple budget workshops, which got us here tonight. And we will spend the month of August getting to adoption on the twenty fifth. In evaluating the current organization, we identified those areas or opportunities for improvement. We also looked at those areas where we performed quite well. I'll call them centers of excellence. During the first quarter of my interim term, I began a process of evaluating the organization. With firms who have expertise in local government management, who could offer recommendations for improvements. One of their recommendations that was presented to you previously was to realign the organization. To better manage the functions of the departments, to balance responsibilities. And to create an opportunity for collaboration and greater synergy. I'm proposing that we move forward with their recommendation and realign the organization as you see on this chart. Next slide, please. I for identifying economic development opportunities. We've previously talked about developing an economic development strategic plan. Which would create equitable prosperity that brings community benefit. I'm proposing that we engage in that economic development strategic plan very soon. And staff's been working on the R F P for that strategic plan. And F for focus, focusing on superior customer service, starting with Dot Leads. Which is a program that will look at fostering superior customer service that's tangible and measurable through leadership development. Equipping staff with skills to identify opportunities for improvement and empowering staff to take. The initiative to introduce change and develop our capacity as an organization. Next slide, please. The twenty twenty three budget looks to hone in on commission priorities, prioritize community needs. As we recover from a global pandemic and address systematic issues. Yet this is a transitional budget. We have many challenges. We're not going to be able to fix everything in one cycle. But we will start the process for long term sustainability and success. So as we talk about the challenges, those challenges are external as well as internal. As we look at our external challenges, we have inflation at an all time high. As well as significant supply chain issues. We've had the cybersecurity attack. We have the threat of cybersecurity as an external challenge. And we have failing infrastructure internally. As well as high debt, fund imbalance and workforce recruitment and retention challenges in today's market. None of these challenges, however daunting they may seem, are insurmountable. But they will take a concerted effort from the governing body to overcome. At this time, our budget team will preview with you the proposed budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This year, we have a four hundred thirty two million dollar twenty twenty three proposed budget. That compares to a four hundred and twenty million dollar budget that we have last year, which is about a twelve million dollar difference. Some of these things that we have built into this budget is we're funding thirty one different funds across the whole county. Also, that includes over two hundred plus services across the whole county. And some of the things that we were able to do were built in a half mill decrease on the county side. And we were also able to increase the mill by a quarter in the parks and rec fund. Also, within the, within this four hundred and thirty two million dollar budget, we did create a solid waste fund. Which is about ten million dollars and eight million dollars of that came out of the city general fund on both the expense side and the revenue side. So as far as the general funds, the city and the county revenue that we're bringing in is a hundred and sixty five million dollars. And that compares to a hundred and seventy million dollars last year. And on the county side, we're bringing in eighty million dollars. And this includes a half mill decrease and also a quarter mill that was shifted to Parks and Rec Fund. And so that compares to seventy five million dollars last year. Here we have a view of the consolidated general fund. And one of the things we have going on the consolidated general fund is a, it's a two hundred and forty eight million dollar expenditure budget. And that compares to last year, we had a two hundred and fifty five million dollar budget. And if you see if we're looking at the combined totals, we're about four point four seven where we have four point four seven million dollars. Where we have more expenditures going out than revenues. And most of that is made up in our city general fund, which has four point two million dollars more expenditures going out than revenues coming in. But if we look at our county general fund, we can see where we have eighty million dollars of revenue coming in. And eight million dollars of revenue going out. So that's, that's a good thing for that fund in parks. We are two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars more expenditures going out of revenues. But that's because we're choosing to do a little more spending this year to just some of the things we heard from the community.
Got a question, Reggie. Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District Seven. So half mill reduction on the county side. And then you're going to take a quarter mill out of the county side to go to parks?
Yes.
How come that doesn't come out of the city side?
So Parks, Parks is a county fund, the consolidated Parks Fund is. So and one of the reasons the city side, it's already in the hole. And so there, there's, we're like four point two million dollars in the hole on the city side.
So we're in the hole on the city side, so let's tax the county side.
No, no, that's, that's, that's not the thinking.
I mean, that's what it sounded like.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And so we got another question. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of piggybacking off Commissioner Stites. The quarter mill is just, it's a shift.
It is, it is.
So it's not a new tax, it's just shifting count county funds to over to the Parks Department.
Yes, to Parks, to consolidated Parks Fund, which is a county fund.
Okay, so it's not an entirely new tax. It's just shifting one money from one pot to the other.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a thing that you're able to do with a consolidated government.
So one of the things we wanted to make sure we did with this budget is we kind of reflected on the commission feedback with we love parks night. And we look to find a way to be able to provide some funding to to parks. And so shifting that quarter mill from the county allows us to be able to provide funding to parks. For some additional projects that you'll hear from the assistants as we continue the presentation.
So so here we have a view of the city general fund. And as I touched on before, we, we see in the twenty twenty three budget column in the expenditures. We have, we have a four point two million dollar net change in fund balance. And so some of the things that that is made up of is because we had a four percent decrease in revenue. Also, with the decrease in revenue, we also built in a decrease in expenditures. And also we moved out eight million dollars for the new enterprise fund from solid waste. And that came out of both the expenditure and the revenue side. And one of the things we also did was we moved in sixteen F T E from my EMS fund. Which were amounts about two million dollars. And basically that was just to help support that fund because that fund was going into the negative and we needed those F T E. So here in the county general fund, we kind of touched on earlier where we have eighty million dollars of revenue going out. Or coming in rather, and then eighty million dollars of expenditures going out. And you see our base twenty two original budget, we have a six point four increase in revenue. And then we also have a four point eight percent increase in expenditures. And this is where we've already kind of touched on where this, this particular fund had a point seven five mill drop. Which is about three fourths and half of the mill reduction stays here. And then a quarter of the mill reduction went over to the Parks Fund. So here's a view of the county Parks Fund. And some of the things we have going on here is we did increase the annual government revenues. Which it gets a transfer from the city general fund. And we increased that a little over three hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty three. And then also we had an increase of four hundred thousand dollars, which was related to the mill increase. So they have an additional seven hundred thousand dollars just from those two things. And then also the excess value that increased also. So we see we had a sixteen percent increase in revenue and a five percent increase in expenditures. And we're going to include additional operating expenditures in here. And we also have new employees to help our park system out, just as far as recreation coordinators. And also maintenance folks to help keep our parks going. And here's a few of some of our new capital projects across the city general fund, the county general fund and from our ARCA funding. So we had our fire station in Turner that we were going to start building. We had some cost increase there. So some of the dollars for the cost increase came from city general fund in an amount of six hundred thousand dollars. And then on our fleet center, we're going to be doing a resurfacing project there. It's going to be four hundred and eight thousand dollars. And then with the police department, we want to continue to fund their body worn cameras, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then we have annual pavement preservation in the city general fund of one point two million dollars. But overall, in the whole budget, we have like two point two million dollars of of new money. In, in, just across the whole four hundred and thirty two million dollar budget. And then our county general fund, we're able to. Purchase the, or we're planning to purchase the Sheriff's Department an additional boat. And then also on the county side, Loring, where we're taking over services from Bonner Springs. That they were doing for us, we're going to be doing pavement preservation out there in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And then we're going to have a county wide radio project that goes on. It's some of this funded from the county general fund. It's about a seven million dollar project where we replace all radios across the county for all public safety and all public works. And that includes the city of Edwardsville, Bonner Springs and also B P U. And also the city of Kansas, Kansas. And ARCA funding, we have Wyandotte County Park Trail that'll be built and then also Pearson Park Trail. And then A Street Park where that has been experiencing flooding for years. I'm going to do a new green project there in about six point two million dollars. And then courthouse will be the air handling system.
Got a question, Commissioner Kane.
Reggie. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a boat and a trailer? Well, that's what it says. Well, how many boats you gonna buy? A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a boat and a trailer is wow. I mean, I realize you'll have to have the the lights and all that stuff. But that can't possibly cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my mind. I think someone needs to revisit that number.
Good evening. Should we go ahead? Okay. Um, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Debbie Johnsher, Deputy CFO. So this, I'm, this next slide is going to cover, we've done a long range forecast. So we're starting with the twenty twenty three proposed. The first column here is the exact same as what Reggie just showed on the previous slide for twenty twenty three. This is the consolidated general fund, which includes all three. And then we've included an additional four year forecast out. For the consolidated fund. And I'll just note some of the assumptions that we've included on the revenue side. We do not have any additional changes in the mill from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven. We do have assessed value built in at five percent per year and other revenues at three to five percent growth. And we do realize that this, this is probably on the conservative side. Because the, the increase in assessed value for this year was a lot more than five percent. But we don't really know what the future holds. So we've, we've built in our revenue for the forecast a little bit more conservative. On the expense side, for salaries and wages, we have four percent per year built in. And on the capital, it includes the five year C M I P as well as some additional funding for streets with the C P I increase. Feedback that we had gotten from the commission was that we wanted to include more funding for street preservation. In the current year for twenty twenty three, we have twenty five percent built in. However, it's not all within the general funds. So within the general fund projections, we have included ten percent. Did just want to note that for the fund balance, if you'll notice for twenty twenty three, we're at nineteen point eight percent. But with that forecast, you can see that it starts dropping in twenty twenty four. We're at seventeen percent, then thirteen percent. We're at seventeen percent, uh, then thirteen percent, um, all the way down to twenty twenty-seven, where it's seven percent. And to just want to note that with, uh, dropping the fund balance, you know, that can have impacts with, not having enough reserves in the event of an emergency. Or, you know, it can also affect the credit rating, um, pr- credit ratings. So we, I just want to note that yes, dropping, dropping to that level, um, does go below our fund balance policy. The next slide, um, talks about the general fund, uh, reserve policy. So as we prepare for the uncertainty, we want to just keep in mind what our, what our fund balance policy is.
Question, Commissioner Townsend.
I'm sorry, Ms. John, should to interrupt your flow, but I did want to, uh, ask this question while we were on it. Looking at the projections out for the year shown, one of the assumptions that you made, um, was that there'd be no change in the mill rate, right?
That's correct.
So, so what we're looking at as this fund balance declines after twenty twenty-four? Well, the decline starts twenty twenty-three and continues through twenty twenty-seven. Would it be, are we saying that based on these numbers, these expenditures and projected revenues, if we do nothing else or, or we make the changes that are, are, are proposed with the change in the, um, decrease in the mill on the county side? And is, this is what is going to happen?
This, this is what it would be, yes, based on our projections, there's no mill increase. We built, you know, obviously if assessed value increased higher than five percent, that would change the revenue projections. But right now we just have five percent there, so yes, um, as.
Again, if what?
What we have built in on the revenue side for assessed value growth is just five percent. We do know that in twenty twenty-three, the, the assessed value increased about thirteen percent. So that's why I said our, our projections are somewhat conservative. Because we don't know what's going to happen in the future years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of to, kind of piggyback off of, uh, Commissioner Townsend's comments and question is, I know every jurisdiction, every community, their real estate, the real estate market is very different across the country, across our metro, it's very different. But is five percent an average, industry average, would you say, or?
I don't know if it's an industry, you know, if we look at just this, just for twenty twenty-three, we were looking at thirteen percent. So that's, that's way above what that five percent. But I think if you go back and look at, you know, over prior years, we were not that high. I think it was maybe in the five to eight percent. So we just, we just built in five percent.
Okay, and are, again, communities are very different, or the market can be different compared to Casey Mo, Johnson County, communities are different. Values are different, valuations. Are other jurisdictions being this conservative as well? Do you know?
I don't know that for their, I haven't seen any of their forecast. If they have a five-year forecast out, I haven't seen it. So I don't know that I can really answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stites.
Stites District Seven. So thirteen percent, um, appraised value increase in one year, which that equates to what in dollars, please?
I'm not exactly sure what, for the, for this, for the general funds, I believe it was, it could have been around. I believe for the total, um, it was fifteen million for all funds. I think for the general funds, it might have been maybe nine million, but I can double check that.
Okay. And a half mil on the county side reduction equates to what in dollars?
Eight hundred thousand.
So nine million dollars. We've increased our general fund. And we're going to take a big stab and, uh, take out only eight hundred thousand dollars to give tax relief. I think is, uh, not the direction that I'm interested in. And I don't think that that's what our, um, citizens were asking for when they begged us for tax relief. Not a, not a half mil, not for eight hundred thousand dollars. What does that, what does that equate to per household, that eight hundred thousand dollars?
A half mil, uh, if you're looking at a two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar home, one mil was twenty-three dollars. So a half mil would be eleven dollars.
Eleven dollars a month?
A year.
Oh, warning. There's that bass boat people are always wanting to buy. And, but their appraised value went up what, per household?
Thirteen percent.
Which equates to how much in dollars?
For, for, for an individual, uh, it would be, well, on a hundred, that probably twenty-six dollars.
Let's go with the two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
That's what we used on the, uh, on the, uh, what they're going to save. So two hundred thousand dollars, it went up how much?
Twenty-six dollars.
A year?
Yes.
It only went up twenty-six dollars?
Oh, no, that would be the, that would be the increase in the amount that they're, um, I'm having to think about that, let me think about that calculation. Let me think about that calculation, can I get back to you on that?
Absolutely, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. The, so overall, we are projecting a four and a half percent, a four and a half million dollar loss in fiscal year twenty twenty-three and future losses in subsequent years. And which puts us underwater in terms of our policy going forward. We'll be bankrupt if we continue to go down this road. I don't know that that is prudent for us as a commission to, to see this, to recognize this and not take some corrective action. This, this projection is suggesting that we lose, we lose four and a half million in twenty twenty-three, four point nine million twenty twenty-four, a loss of six point six million in twenty twenty-five, a loss of eight point one million in twenty twenty-six, and a loss of nine million in twenty twenty-seven, which drops our fund balance, we're projecting down to eleven point one million dollars in twenty twenty-seven. I don't know how we can see this and not make, take, make some corrective actions. It would be very imprudent upon us, uh, to, to see these numbers. As I, I, I don't know that I've said, because I'll say it right now. I don't mind going into fund balance, but I think we need to do it responsibly. We need to do it strategically. To continue this way is not a way that I can stomach or, or even approve, uh, as it's presented. So I just need somebody to help me here, because I, I can't, I can't, I can't get there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner McKinner.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll just say what I've said before and, and just repeat myself. Just as the value for property has gone up, appreciated, gone up, so has the cost of personnel, goods and services that we use to provide services for the people and, uh, the families of our city and our county. And I'm still, I just want somebody to demonstrate to me how the math works, because so far I haven't seen how the math works to reduce revenue and increase provision of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bynum.
You have, I just have some questions, um, going back to the potential of the point seven five on the county side mill drop and half a mil of it is the county. And a quarter of a mil is within parks. I want to make sure I'm understanding the explanation of the point seven five and where it's coming from as it relates to that quarter mil. Because it's a mill drop, correct? The quarter mil is a, a mill drop, it's just coming from a different place.
So it is a, it is a mill drop from the county general fund, but it shifts over to the consolidated parks fund.
Okay.
So in total, we took, uh, three quarters of a, of a mil from the county general fund, but a quarter of it went to consolidated parks.
A quarter of it went to consolidated parks.
Yes.
On the county side of the ledger, will the residents of Windock County enjoy a point seven five mill levy drop?
No, it would be a half a mil.
They would enjoy a half mil. And the quarter mil is just moving.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that, I was struggling to, to get there. A week or so ago, we had the mayors of Bonner and Edwardsville here and made some reflections and requests. And Mayor Kahar in Edwardsville emailed me the bullet points that she had said that night. And I imagine maybe we all got them. And some of them, I don't think we can necessarily answer tonight, I think they need more time. For example, one of the things she's requesting is allow Edwardsville to leave the Piper Edwardsville Turner Library Board and eliminate that library mill from Piper, from Edwardsville residents. I don't know if we have that authority. I think those things might be in state statute. We'd all have to go back and, and have a look at how to eliminate one of the communities out of the library board mill levy, which is a separate mill levy and has nothing to do with what we're talking about right here. But I'm just suggesting that we're going to need to do some research about the legality of how that's, how that's funded and who should pay for it. She asks two, two requests that I would like to understand better tonight. One of her statements is eliminate messy consolidated funds other than consolidated parks. What consolidated funds do we have?
Right now, the only, uh, the only consolidated fund that we have is the consolidated parks fund.
And.
All the other funds are, are pretty much either a county fund or a city fund.
I'm, I'm wanting to understand for her purposes, the people who live in Edwardsville and all of the rest of us, what would be the benefit to either leaving it consolidated, which I think is a function of consolidation twenty-five years ago, if I understand, or somehow separating. And the second item that I'm seeking information to understand better is, she says audit county departments insuring programs and community investments only eligible and accessible to Kansas City, Kansas residents are being funded through KCK tax revenue and not county tax dollars. And she suggests the health department and parks. And some of this is by state statute, is it not? I mean, the county health department is a county health department. I don't know what portion of those are not accessible, or I should say accessible only to KCK residents. That's not my understanding of how those departments function at all. So I don't, everyone's just staring at me. I mean, I'm just looking for clarity, I'm, I'm just asking for some clarity. She made this request of us, and one of the things she's asking for is audit county departments insuring programs only eligible and accessible to KCK residents are funded only through KCK. And I don't, I don't know how to do that. Those are county functions accessible to every single person who lives in Windock County, am I wrong? Am anybody, please tell me.
Yeah, I, I personally haven't heard of any services that we offer that are just for KCK.
So I just, I just, I just, I want to be responsive to the other communities, but I want us to all be on the same page about about what the reality is. Health department and parks are county functions which are available to everyone's. Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to beat it to death so much as I'm trying to understand the request. And I would like future to understand, and I have all this documentation somewhere, because I've had to study it over and over and over again to understand it myself, the state laws that set up our library system decades and decades and decades ago.
I was just going to comment on the, um, with the health department and the, the parks. Yes, the, the health department is a county function. So even though it serves residents for both KCK and the other cities, it's still considered a county function. And we can pull the, pull the statutes on that. I think we already have those, they may have already been presented, um, with our funds report, I think, because that is one of the count, the funds that we look at. And do know for parks, uh, it was previously a separate, we had a separate city and a county levy. And it wasn't changed at consolidation, it was maybe two thousand and eight, I think, or something.
Okay.
Where we did consolidate, uh, because there was a separate city and a county, county levy, but it was consolidated into one, one county fund. But then there is a transfer from the city general fund to the consolidated parks fund. Because we do know that some of those parks, uh, are within the city of Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay, that's helpful, that helps me understand it a little bit better. And I, I, I understand the frustration we are experiencing here in seeking mill levy reduction. And I'm not, I'm looking at you, but I'm just speaking generally to all of us. We know, we asked weeks and weeks ago what the cost of the new, um, employment contracts, that the increased cost of health insurance, we, you gave us that answer two or three weeks ago, and it was around the twelve million dollar mark, I believe. And so we know that valuations are up thirteen percent. And we know that that's an enormous number of millions of dollars of new revenue. And we also know that every single thing we do is more expensive. And the struggle, so you've brought us, you know, what you think is, is balanced to the best of our ability. And the struggle that we have here as the governing body is how can we provide any level of mill levy reduction that's reasonable and practical? And I'm, and I'm going to say the same thing I said the other day in our small group. If it's eleven dollars, I want my eleven dollars. And I'm sorry, it's only eleven dollars, but I'm, I want my eleven dollars. And I'm just saying that to us collectively, um, because we all know what it costs to put gas in the car and everything else that we're doing these days. So I'm not admonishing, I'm grateful. I'm not admonishing, I'm grateful for the hard work you do. And so when I look at you, it's not because I'm like, it's your fault. Because we know it's not. You're bringing us the information and now it's our job to make the decisions.
Thank you. I did just want to touch on Commissioner Stites. So for a $200,000 home, the one mill would be $23. With a 13% increase in value, that would bring that home to 226,000. Now that then one mill would be $26, so that'd be a $3 increase and with, that's just for one mill. So if it were, the city, the city and county mill currently is 70 for 2022 is 77 mills. So that would be an amount of $231 for the entire year for the city and county mill. City and county. 77. No, it's, it's currently 77 mil, 77. We actually have that in a later slide. That's the UG portion. That does not include the school districts. That is just the city and county only. It would be, it's $26 per, for one mill. For a, a home that's 226,000. For that one, Ike actually came up with 231. But I can double check.
Okay, no problem. Well, so, so going back to Commissioner Johnson, who, who and, and Commissioner Bynum, we are not, and I'm not, this isn't a slam. We are not presented a balanced budget. We're presented a budget that shows decrease every single year to, we're not able to sustain life any longer. We fold up, we close up shop. So a few months ago, or weeks or a month ago, we all sat up here and everybody was just as happy as they could be when we was presented. Well, let's, let's give parks more money, more money, more money. Well, we don't have more money to give. And yet here we are tonight presenting a budget that says, let's shift money over to parks because they need it. Well, guess what? We could shift it all, shift it over and give everybody all, uh, ice cream sundaes, but eventually that's going to catch up to us. And we're going to have to pay the piper one day. And, and that, I think that day's here. We're here now. So I'm not in favor of quarter mill off the, um, the side going to parks. Where we need to look at our, our whole from top to bottom and figure out how we get our budget balanced. And not go down this path that in just four years, three and a half years, we're down to 7% in our reserves. And like you said, that reflects our bond rating. That doesn't give us our, 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 our fund balance that's required for us to operate in case of an emergency. So to, uh, I, I I'm not in favor of this budget at all. Not saying that I'm, um, don't, I'm not thankful for your all's work. I'm just saying this isn't, we, we can't sustain this. We can't, I can't do that at my home. I can't sit and say, well, you know what, honey? Four years from now, I'm going to plan this out right now. Four years from now, we got to move because we're spending more today than, than we're bringing in in four years. So start planning. That's, I mean, we need to take, take that information today and make those changes and, and, and take hard looks at things and figure out how we get this balanced, not imbalanced.
Thank you, Commissioner Stites. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, I agree with everything that is being said. Uh, we, we cannot continue the way we're going. I think last time Commissioner Markley put it perfectly. No, the reason why we're here is because of us, the commission. We continue to take out a fund balance with no plan to replace it. And so I think it's time for us to, we need to, as Commissioner Johnson said, take corrective action. One thing that I, I, I have been thinking about, and I'm curious, you know, commissioners, you can tell me later, so we don't have to continue prolonging this. But when it comes to this, comes to budget time and we're given budget books, I would like the city and county budgets completely in two different budget and two different binders. Because it is hard to go through that entire huge budget book and try and figure out what is city, what is county. So I, not this, not this budget cycle, because I know those budget books are probably already being printed. But next year and going forward, two different binders, one for the county budget, one for the city budget that outlines all programs and services that come out of both budgets. Because as of right now, if a citizen asks what I can give a high level, the health department, the parks, the sheriff, that's county. But specifically, I can't give specifics because then I'd have to shuffle through the entire big budget book. So that is a request and hopefully something that we can do for the next budget cycle and then moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you. If we're going to look to cut this down, we've got to look at cost centers. I mean, parks takes a small fractional piece of the budget spending in this budget. If we're going to knock this bad boy down like we say we want to do, you're going to have to look at cost centers. People say they want improved infrastructure. We're going to have to cut that money and these roads are going to have to go to gravel if we want to actually cut it down. Police, people say that they want public safety. We're gonna have to cut that down if we want to achieve the kinds of cuts that we're talking about here today. So I'm, just invite us to stop looking at these little fractional pieces of the expense side and consider that if we want to make big changes on the expense side, we got to go to our cost centers. And I'm sorry, Reggie, I keep looking at you while I say that. I'm not directing this to you because you're just preparing the numbers, sir. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you. I, I think I'm going to echo a little bit of what Commissioner McCarron said. First of all, a technical question, the required date by which the budget needs to be adopted is what? I know that's the date. I know August 25th is our planned budget adoption date. What's the law say?
I believe we have to have the, um, it's submitted to the clerk prior to October 1. Is that correct? Go ahead.
Commissioner, if I may, that is correct. With the idea of RNR exceeding RNR, you now have the October 1 deadline of getting it submitted after you have your public hearing after, after August 20th. So you have to have that, uh, public hearing between, we are going to, from the 22nd, but by rule, it's, it's, it's August 20th to September 20th with a submittal to follow before October 1 with, with exceeding.
I, I had, I thought it had pushed into September once we said we weren't doing revenue neutral. So August 25th isn't mandatory. It's what we've said and I'm not against it, but I was, the reason I was asking is because I was interested in, you know, perhaps spending a little bit more time with the budget. And you know, so far we've had this really high level look at it. And in the past, I think we've taken more time to see what McCarron might be calling cost centers. I'm just saying, could we just look at departments? Where did the increase occur? Because if, if we want to, if we want to give the half mill, which I do, and we did enthusiastically throughout these budget workshops, embrace increases for infrastructure, which I know I championed and parks and things that we know we want. Unless and until we can look more deeply at all the departments, whether they be city or county, we don't know what we might be able to do somewhere else. I would just, all I'm asking is I would just like to spend more time with the budget detail and mayor. I'm happy to be back in person and on the dais, but my opinion only, the fifth floor conference room to me lends itself better to this dialogue. Something about the setup of the room where I can actually make eye contact with my fellow commissioners and we're talking to each other and not at staff. So I'm just suggesting those deeper conversations to me feel more comfortable in the fifth floor conference room. And that's it. Thank you.
Before we move to Commissioner Burrows, does the commission as a whole, do you prefer to have these in the fifth floor conference room for budget hearings outside of the, okay, we'll make that happen. We'll make that happen. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Burrows. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bynum. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's, I'm going to be again, the outlier this evening to a certain extent. I've, I've been here for five years and I've asked anyone that's wanted to join me on the financial side to sit down and go through the budget. And we've had staff in and I think at one time we had maybe three of us sitting down and I believe McCarron was one of them to sit down with this, started working through some of these budgets. But I believe, uh, that we can provide services. We may not be able to provide all of them this year. But when it comes to tough decisions, obviously we have a spending problem, if that's what I'm hearing. And if we have a spending problem, then we have to get rid of some of the things that we're spending money on. And if that's the case, then we need to make those decisions. That is the prudent thing to do. It's the responsible thing to do. And I know, uh, I'll share this with you. I, I see this includes $2 million support of EMS enterprise fund. I, I believe we're operating at a deficit in that fund every year of almost a tune of a million dollars. If I stand corrected, please tell me. Is that true?
So we, we usually go in to try to balance that fund out. So, so it's not like it's an every year thing. And also we, we always have some expenses for EMS over in the city general fund. So now we are moving $2 million over. There are, there is already some funding that is over in the city general fund. And so one of the things with a fund like that, uh, with, with an EMS fund, you can't always expect it to like make its own money. It, it's going to need some type of support.
And the reason why I bring that up, what kind of funding do we have for that, Reggie, besides just ending balance in the city to, to fill that, to backfill that? What kind of, uh, revenue do we have to pay for that outside of ending?
So EMS fund is like an $11 million fund.
And where does it come from?
I mean, it, it comes from a special sales tax and also from revenues that, that they collect from the services they provide to the community.
So we
And it's getting, it's getting harder for them to collect their, their revenues also.
Yeah. And thank you for that. That was my next comment. If we're not able to collect it, I know there's collection agencies that'll pay 50 cents on the dollar to take that over. We get some revenue in, but we've lost the opportunity to, to go back and, and receive the additional revenue. I mean, these, there's things that we can do that we can even do on a temporary basis to get our house in order and come back and look at things. It was mentioned about the, the, the cost of the boat. And I, I understand that it's needed and it's, our other boat is completely outdated and takes on more water than it skips across, I believe was the comment that, that was made. And, uh, but do we, do we need to spend it this year? Do we need to spend 170,000 on, on it? The police cars, they're $31,250 apiece. Do, uh, we need to spend the 31,000 on, on the eight cars that are suggested this year? These are things that we, we can look at, but you know, I have a question in reference to the revenue loss projection that went into the budget last year. I believe it was 18 million into the city fund. Or, or was that a collective amount?
Uh, I believe it was, uh, 12 million. And I think that was the, the entire city.
The city was 12 and it was six for the county?
I think so, yeah.
And here we are with a $5 million deficit. Are we, where else did we may have lost revenue that the ARPA funds could have backfilled on that? I mean, I, I don't know i- if that hasn't been considered. I know we had the million dollar plus hit on cybersecurity. We didn't go out and insure ourselves for that, so we absorbed that cost. We had the litigation issue, which we, we are dealing with. We have other issues that continue to come forward throughout the year. And we still have our contingency fund set aside, but we keep using our ending balance to pay things. But since I have been here, I have not seen any cut in services, fees, gone out and renegotiated our franchise fees. There's things that we can do collectively as a body and they, uh, we have failed to move forward on that. For whatever reason, it's no, it's not one person's fault. This COVID really impacted things. But I think from this point, if this budget says anything, and from what I hear from my colleagues, there's opportunity here. And I've got, I, I've had the experience of 26 years doing budgets that are four times bigger than our city budget. And there are ways to make them work. Some of them are normal processes. Some of them are painful, but they, they get done. And I would encourage just to give that some thought. I'm willing to sit across the table and have those discussions. I love my parks. I'd like to say we have the number one parks in the metropolitan area, but we don't. And if we do, it's going to cost us. I'd like to say we have the best roads in the metropolitan area, but we don't. But if we're going to, we need to look at how we're going to pay for those in a different manner. And if we're going to levy fees and penalties, and then we're looking at policy positions that erase those and reschedule those. We've got delinquent money setting out here. EMS was a good one that, that we talked about. That was hard to collect. Property taxes are hard to collect. The, uh, I received a notice today and I'm sure the rest of the commission did too, in reference from the, from the Department of Revenue in the state that our assessor was recognized for being in compliance on residential property. But our commercial property was not in compliance. I asked today what that, how was it we weren't in compliance? What is it? Is it the dark store theory that's going to come into play? That we may be able to reass- reassess some of the larger businesses within our community and bring in additional revenue? Those are things we should know as we go into this budget so that we don't cut too deep, but we don't over, over budget. And I'm willing to sit down with any of you to, to run through, to run through these, uh, departments. I like the idea that if a part, if a department exceeds its budget authority, why, why are there, why are their reserves higher than they should be by policy? We've had that discussion a number of times. I think it's important that there be, there's a note in the book that why we, that reserve has continued to build. What services are we not providing? Or what are we saving the reserves for? If it's technology, then it needs to be put in the budget that way. So we have a way of identifying that the revenue isn't being collected and not being utilized. Those are idle funds that need to be utilized some way, shape or form. But, um, I, I appreciate my colleagues listening, but I don't see this as a daunting exercise. I see it as a very educational opportunity for us to get our house in financial order. And I stand ready to do my part. As I stated, we don't necessarily have a revenue problem as much as we're having a spending problem right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mayor. Have I mentioned I wanted a park in Piper? 18 budgets, I've asked that. But here's something that was in the newspaper, I think, that we really need to look at. The fire station we're getting ready to build is $11 million. The one in De Soto that has a hazmat, which is twice as technical as the one we're going to build, is only $7 million. There's $4 million there, Mayor. Somebody has fed us a line. How can we build something out there in De Soto for $7 million? It's more technical than the one we're going to build over here for $11 million because the fire department staff has put stuff in there that they want, not what they need. And there's a huge difference when we're looking at something to say, what do you really need? And what do you really want? So I, you know, when we're looking at all the things at each department, I take a big look at a $4 million gap and then ask them what the money is supposed to be for. and then ask them what the money is supposed to be for. And then go out there in De Soto and talk to those guys and say, how did you get this done for 7 million dollars? Because they know a hell lot more about what's going on than we do. And I do appreciate this budget style. There's been a lot of input from all of us. I was trying to sit here and not say a word. That didn't work. But seriously, 11 million dollars versus 7 million dollars, something is dead wrong. And we need to take a look across the board about, did anybody else overestimate what they really wanted? Or what they really needed? So I think we need to look at that. And once again, did I mention we need a park in Piper?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKeon. Commissioner Kane, I.
Hang on, I'm sorry. Commissioner Burrows said something, and we own the ground. So how much more was it fabricated? And I don't mean to get excited, but when I see that and I know the distance between hazmat and the other stuff and the technical equipment that it's gonna take to run that out there, we have failed miserably to our community to allow somebody overestimate so far. And you know, once again, if you look at the vehicles they drive, do they have to drive that nice of vehicles? They can't drive a Traverse or something? I mean, how many of you guys besides Harold's got a car like that? Sorry, Harold.
Thank you, Commissioner McCurnan, I believe you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Kane, I told Commissioner Bynum before we started tonight, I wasn't gonna talk at all. I think this is my fifth time on the microphone, so. I would just caution all of us, some of us sitting here old enough to remember a commercial. The tagline was, you can pay me now or you can pay me later. And we over the years have made some decisions to not pay for short-term expenses that now result in things like the Kansas Avenue and the Central Avenue Bridges both being closed. We can't forget that as we think about making incremental spending decisions in the short run, we have to always look at the potential long-term implications of not spending that money. Because right now, we did not spend money on Kansas Avenue Bridge Maintenance on an annual basis. It's closed. We did not spend money on the Central Avenue Bridge Maintenance on an annual basis. It's closed. We can't afford to close anymore bridges, which means we can't afford to defer those fairly small amounts of money because they compound over time and they come back to bite us with a 60 million dollar replacement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for the administrator. And my memory is not all the best. So I remember on threes, the proposed budget at the time was 435, 437. But tonight it's 432. So where were the cuts made from what was presented on threes till tonight?
Okay, so I will turn to our budget manager, Reggie, to respond to that. We did make some changes in the budget because we did not have the balanced approach in the county fund. At the time, I think we did your briefing. We've since balanced that. I'll talk about the areas we've cut.
So we were, we were able to go back in and look at personnel and recognize. And there were some departments that had some overtime things going on that we were able to recognize some savings, which really helped us out. Also, we went in and cut some capital across the board. Most of the cuts were made in the city general fund because when we did bring the budget to you all in the on three, that deficit was at like 8.2 million dollars in. And so that, that's where we were able to like slice the budget down. And there were some new positions in that we cut out of the budget also.
Okay, I mean, I'm not complaining that we were able to do it. Could we get, not just me, but just the whole commission and itemize a list of what was cut and the amounts, just so that I can have for reference?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis.
I also was just holding my tongue, just kind of listening, given this is my first budget process. Few thoughts off the back, what we're looking at is not a budget. I just want everybody to kind of make note of that. We are talking about a forecast here. So that's the other part. We have yet to see within these slides an actual budget, which kind of leads me to my next point. Ms. Harrison Lee, will we see a detailed budget that is itemized? And by itemized, I mean department by department. Within that, we have personnel, all of the expenses, we have the revenue and how much that department has, and then we also have the funds. Will we see that?
Yes, you will get a budget book.
Okay, awesome, because that to me is the real budget. This is kind of just.
Yes, and I do want to call your attention to, I'm glad you brought up the forecast because one of the things we heard a week or so ago was that as our consultants looked at the forecast, they looked back to like the 19 and looked at how the forecast they did not believe was sustainable because we've been showing this structural imbalance for a significant period of time. We needed to have a plan as an organization and have not developed a plan. And so one of the things we've talked about is, okay, as you look at this budget, as you look at this transition budget, you will need to develop a budget and a plan to address this structural imbalance in your budget. My recommendation is that as you develop the next year's budget, that you look at two years at a time so that you have an opportunity to look at that and you look at a long-term capital plan as well. So that you have some very strategic intentional discussion on how to address these long-term structural imbalances that have been in the budget. So I'm glad you brought up, this is a forecast, this particular chart that's in front of you is a forecast.
Gotcha, gotcha. And same for the C M I P. We will see a detailed C M I P then, you know, has the ARPA, you know, past projects, has equipment and has, you know, how much we're spending on streets and other projects as well. We will receive that as well.
We will give you capital, what those capital projects are.
Okay, yeah, because I would like far more detail than what we're looking at here. This is kind of a summary. I'm not really interested in summaries at this point. I need to see kind of where the money is going to make an educated decision on my vote. Commissioner Ramirez brought up this point and I want to echo this. We've talked a lot about how we're going to spend money, but there was a part in the exercise that was done. Ali Porter and Ashley Hannon and company had done a great job on this where there was a question about revenue. If we keep only focusing on expenses and we do not focus on revenue, and by revenue I do not mean solely, right, property taxes. There are other ways that we can generate funding from the unified government. I haven't seen an intent. We've had a whole bunch of special sessions about dreams, about a lot of things that we cannot afford. But we can make real, concrete decisions this budget season to increase our revenue. I would love for staff to put together and put our minds together of how can we increase revenue without looking at property taxes and without looking at the pilot? What other things can we do? I agree with Commissioner Burrows when it comes to beefing up tax collection, but are there other things that we need to take into consideration? The other thing that I'm very mindful of in this process, this was presented last month to us in the Finance Standing Committee, is that we underspend somewhere between 5 to 6 million dollars. That's about the five-year average. One of the reasons why I am not so worried about this forecast was presented is because I'm expecting that these projections will not be completely accurate, which is not a bad thing, right? Especially when it comes to capital projects. If the project does not go through, that means money is unspent. I'm okay with that, but I just want my colleagues to realize that these projections are rather conservative. Have we, and this has been a request since March, made any attempt to reach out to the other taxing jurisdictions? Staff, mayor, county administrators, anybody have any update on where other taxing jurisdictions are at this time, on whether or not they're gonna raise property taxes? Do we have a list?
I know we had reached out when we, you know, was before we actually started putting the final numbers together, but I think that was before the date that they had to certify with the clerk whether they were gonna exceed their revenue neutral. And I believe that most of them had indicated that they were not increasing, but I don't, we haven't ever seen the final, I don't think.
Gotcha.
I don't know if that's something we can get from the clerk? Or if.
Well.
The other agents.
That information would certainly be welcomed because if we're gonna talk about lowering taxes and we want our residents to fill that 11 dollars, even if it's 11 dollars, then we have to ensure that our other taxing jurisdictions are in line with that. If not, then quite honestly, nothing that we do is really gonna be beneficial for our residents. The last thing I'll say is this, I think we have to reconcile our priorities here. I think we have a lot of department heads come and present their needs, which is a lot, but it's really, really difficult to stay on course on what we need to do if we keep entertaining new ways to spend money we don't have. It's just not worth our time, in my opinion. I think the community survey and the commission exercise laid out where the direction is. I think that's where we need to go. I appreciate our county administrator in keeping us in line because that's how we remain solvent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of Commissioner Davis to the to the concept of working cooperatively with the other taxing entities to share the pain. We, some of the electeds have been talking with some of the electeds at the other taxing institutions toward that effort and and some of you know that I kind of keep, several of us have been asking this question for years and we like our dollar bill a lot. We like to show people that we're less than half. So, you know, putting our money where our mouth is and reaching out collectively to communicate and cooperate with these other taxing entities, I think at the elected level is certainly an appropriate line of communication and I keep kind of dreaming that if a school district did a mill and a county did a mill and a college did a mill. Now we have three mills and we've kind of got something and we've shared the pain. That's the approach I'm taking. I think, I don't, we don't know what they will do until they vote for it. But, correct, right, but a mill is kind of the same amount for, I'm only using it as an example, the college as it is for the county, right? It's almost kind of close for the KCK School District as it is for our KCK side of our budget. I would think those are fair comparisons. So we kind of know what the dollars are anyway. I'm still willing to keep pursuing that. There's other tax levies. Again, we have the Piper Edwards, Bill Turner, our own library board will set that. We have the KCK school mill that the school district will set. There are, there are other levies. So I'm, I'm with you. And I think we can have those conversations too.
And if we need to just call a special session to make that happen, we just make it happen. It just takes six of us. So if we can get other electeds to come in, let's do it. We'll get staff. I'm ready, but we've been asking for this for five months now. It needs to happen. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I think the next couple of slides, we've talked a little bit about those. So this was just to show the, what our minimum reserve policy was, and we broke out the city, county and Parks and Rec. We had showed the combined showing for 2023, the fund balance percentage was 19.8, but it actually breaks out for the city, it's 20.1, the county 19.3, and the Parks and Rec at 18.8. This next slide, just looking at where the city and county mills have been, looking back 25 years since consolidation. So pre-unification, the total mill for the city and the county was 97 mills. The county was 32.7 and the city was 64.2. And for 2022, the total is 77.8 mills with the county at 39.3 and the city at 38.4. And then this last one, Commissioner Bynum was just talking about the breakout of the dollar. So this just shows that the UT is only one portion of the tax. Where your tax dollars go, 46% goes to the city and county and the other 54% goes to the other taxing jurisdictions, state, the library, the school district and the community college.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Michael Peterson. I am Assistant Budget Manager. Just for your information, Commissioner Davis, the budget document is posted online currently. And we are working to get copies in your office, hopefully tonight, if not tomorrow, so. That is available. So as part of our new budget outreach initiative that we were doing in the spring, we did some community comparisons. And so one of the things we looked at was property tax revenue. So we frequently talk about the amount, the number of mills that are levied, but so that's only half of the equation. So one half of the equation for collected tax revenue is the mills, the other half is the value of that mill. And so a $200,000 house in any jurisdiction is gonna be the same, $22. So the difference is the amount of tax base that each jurisdiction has. So we went and compared ourselves to counties and cities of similar population across the state. So one of the things you can see comparatively speaking on KCK, the value of one mill is 1.3 million dollars. When a county, the value of the mill that we found for across all the different taxing entities was 1.4 million dollars at the time. And so one of the things that stood out to us, so as a city, we have a much lower, our population density is about half of what a lot of the similarly populated cities are. So what that does is even though we're collecting a similar or a lower amount of revenue per person for our population, we're actually generating half the revenue that a lot of other similar cities are to support our city infrastructure like our, like our payment preservation projects, our public safety departments, our Parks and Rec. So we have half the tax base that that other similar cities have to provide those same services. On the county side, you can see our, our population density is actually one of the highest. We're one of the more urban cities in the state, counties in the state of Kansas. So even though our tax burden per capita for our population is one of the lowest and our mill rate is one of the lowest, we actually have, we're collecting more revenue per our land area to support county services such as the hall department or aging services.
So thank you, budget team and Mayor and Commissioners for the the insight and the feedback that you provided. I want to go back to the priorities that we heard from the commission throughout this process as they overlap with the feedback we heard from the community. And what we heard was investing in infrastructure. And what we heard was investing in infrastructure, looking at our streets, looking at trying to add additional revenue to street preservation, also trying to provide some type of relief to the residents of the county. We also heard that you wanted us to look at retaining and recruiting the talent pipeline, retention and recruitment of our workforce, so innovation and resiliency. And then finally, looking at our amenities and investing in our park infrastructure. So as we move to look at this, we will start with investing in our streets.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and all of you who are joining us here tonight online. Brett Deichler, interim Assistant County Administrator, I'm going to talk about a slide you've seen before, street preservation. While maintenance seems to be, the city streets continues to be the top priority with seventy-two percent of the respondents ranking it the most important community service priority in all the districts. We've heard from the commission-led infrastructure sub-companies that they too were committed to addressing the infrastructure improvements as well. So looking at the various options here, when asked about the best strategy to fund the street preservation, the commission selected the orange line, which is a twenty-five percent increase to, starting at it with an eight-million-dollar baseline through basically twenty-twenty-three. Now, that would only get us targeted to a PCI payment condition index of sixty-five, which is still probably the lower tier where we, we need to be in long-term. But it definitely puts us on a path to keeping us from going into that blue line down here, which is basically ultimate failure. So using that table here that Michael put together, which I appreciate, you can also see, visualize basically how that twenty-five percent investment compounds over the next several years, which by this example equates to roughly thirty-nine point six million dollars invested in the PCI program over the next several, several years here. So, I mean, it's really no pun, but the, the road to improvement with PCI is, is basically just a physical science. You have to throw money at it, it's a cost of being in business. And these are the things that if you let go, that are going to be more problematic in the years to follow because it's what they consider present worth analysis. And if you do not take and add or fix or replace now, it's going to cost you more in the future because as you know, we're in an inflationary, accelerated inflationary environment, which is, which is costing more as we speak. So moving into the next slide, talking about strategic tax relief, it's, it's very tough. But I'll start by saying that the County General Fund is actually in better condition, as you've heard tonight, than looking at the City General Fund. So looking forward, the, the graph shows that revenues are projected to outpace expenditures moving forward. Hopefully, as alluded to by commission here, we can actually build our way out of some of this, which is, is take it off the residential rooftops and get more into the eco-devo side of things by being strategic. I think that we've heard that from all Commissioners and we've also heard about an incremental strategic way of reviewing these reductions, which is also discussed by our finance and budget team here. It's led us to this, to what they have as a currently proposed one-half mill decrease to the county fund. So knowing that, you know, it's difficult in all facets to, to, to do that with a density model we own in residential, we need to be very strategic about what that economic proposal looks like moving forward. And I think that with the collective ideas behind commission, what they've stated here tonight, we're looking just to do that between now and the, the next session. So with that being said, I will turn it over to ACA, Bridget Cobbins, to discuss the innovation and resilience and our projected investments in parks and recreation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Bridget Cobbins, Assistant County Administrator. Innovation and resilience is the third commission priority. We cannot do anything without our employees. And in this market, we have to be an employer of choice to recruit, to retain and to develop the best. Included in this budget are agreed upon union increases and the union and non-union COLA increases. We will need to continue to find other strategies to ensure a competitive workforce. A competitive and classification study will appropriately align our workforce and it will also preserve the integrity and the currency of staff. We also heard an economic development strategic plan that needs to be intentionally, to be intentional in attracting and retaining businesses and cybersecurity measures to protect application, information and operational security. By hiring a grant hiring writer, we will be able to capture federal grant dollars. And this position has the ability to pay for itself when we're seeking grants that are in line with our goals. Seven million dollars in ARPA funding will assist us with the continuous stabilizing our community. Next slide, please. In our parks and recreation, that was our last priority that we heard from this commission. By shifting a quarter of a mill to our parks, we'll be able to provide funding for multiple positions. This would also be visible in the community by being open more, to open more of our hours of operation in our community centers and hiring a park system and assistant manager to manage various funding streams and ensure the projects and that we will have the ability to get those scopes and define the deadlines that they provide for those particular projects before them. Enhanced capital and operating investments gives us the ability to better maintain our parks amenities and implementing a city beautification initiative will assist with beautification and providing an appearance, a better appearance for our overall community. Next slide, please. Compared to our peer parks in both state of Kansas and in Missouri, this graph shows that our findings, that our funding is substantially lower per capita. Improving our parks will align with the results of the citizens in our survey. Those are the four main priorities that we heard from this commission and all of those priorities have been included in the budget presented to you tonight.
So in closing, again, thank you to the CFO, to the budget staff, to the staff in administration and to our intern who is here with us for probably one more day for help in working on the budget as well as all the departments. I mean, this is an all hands on deck exercise and thank you to you for the interactive sessions that we've had to get your feedback. A couple of takeaways, residential doesn't pay its way. It doesn't pay its way even in communities where their average value is a million dollars. Communities need that healthy balance between residential and non-residential. This presentation, particularly the slide that we showed that talked about what a mill equals in the various jurisdictions, clearly delineates the why for economic development. In order to generate additional revenue, we really have to look at economic development. And Commissioner Davis, you touched on the fact that we're talking about the expenditures. This needs a very healthy conversation also about the revenue generation. And so to that end, the proposed Economic Development Strategic Plan is an effort to look at how to develop a way to deal with economic development projects that will generate additional revenue. How do you incent those projects that are projects of choice that will generate additional revenue? We know this is not sustainable. Long-term, the decisions of the past can't be the decisions of the future. We, we have to look at a way to streamline our expenses. I think this transition budget, we can certainly work with you, get departments in front of you. As you look at the budget, that book that's on your desk, it's a lot of reading. It will give you exactly what you've asked for, Commissioner, in terms of you, eight hundred, all eight hundred and sixty-seven pages of detail, Commissioner, that you've asked for. But it will give you the detail and we look forward to working with you all to identify those areas that we need to streamline and reduce to be able to get a budget that at least moves in the direction until you get to that two-year look and that long-term capital, capital projects. Mr. Mayor, that completes our presentation. I will be working with the department directors to meet you on the fifth floor in the conference room and roll up our sleeves and figure out how we can have another session that looks more closely at what you have.
Thank you, Administrator, and thank you, staff. There are a few questions. So bear with us and we're going to start off with Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we talk about public safety and it's one of the major concerns we have here in the community. And we just heard the sheriff say that he's in need of a way to recruit, a way to maintain the future employees and the current employees. And I know he was asking for a lot of money, but I'd like to see us put three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars aside for his group and reevaluate that next year. You know, because I think that's something that in order to maintain our good employees and to get new employees, we're going to have to incentivize them that way. So I, I'd like to, like I said, add three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the budget for the sheriff's department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say overall, thank you, Cheryl, for presenting the budget and taking what we have given you and building a budget around that. I, I really do appreciate that. And I also appreciate you wanting to create economic development strategy. We haven't had one. They've just come to us as they've came. We've never really had any type of plan to figure out where, how and why we want to do economic development. And so I, I do appreciate that you're working on that and I look forward to seeing that and seeing how we all can work together to put that, bring that plan to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Administrator and to all of the staff that participated in, in putting this presentation today. I guess just a few takeaways from me, starting with the first question. I am just concerned when I see the bleed and, and the projected bleed, meaning a negative balance through twenty-twenty-seven, yes, these are forecasts, but we better pay attention to them. They are not the budget, but they are the heads up. And I've been here since thirteen and we've done these forecasts and we've been pretty on point, you know, most of the time. So it is wise to look at this and say, yeah, this is what we've got. This is not really imagination. What I would like to see, Madam Administrator and Mayor, is as we do these workshops to deal with, even though this is transitional, but start on the downward side to stop the bleed, to take this four-point-four minus million dollars and the difference between the projected revenues and expenses and decrease that number. And how are we going to do that? We're going to have to use the magic word no to some things and delay. That's just it. Unless some Brink's trucks roll up in here, I, I think that's going to be it. And, and I would look forward to working with all of my colleagues and, and I'll give you a call about that. But there was a concept when I came that when we would look at, well, we want to move money over here to this item or to that item, then the corresponding question that was always asked and had to be answered is, okay, we're moving a million dollars from here, what is not going to be done? And we're just going to have to, I think, look at that approach. So we're not actually create, we're not creating any money, but we're re, reorganizing where it's spent based on the priorities that the public has shared with us. One of those that I don't see reflected in here was a high priority from the last citizen survey. And we talked about this and that was the need to increase and stabilize with more people and more funds and more support our code enforcement, making the city look better. So I'm surprised I didn't see that in here. But again, the issue would be where can we move money from that we have already maybe to do that? And just be prepared, at least in the short run, to use the magic word no because we cannot contend, continue on a trajectory of red ink. So I appreciate the audits that were done and that's given us a heads up already. So we're just going to have to be real about this. And maybe some of the new capital items, maybe we can't do them all right now. Maybe we can't do as many of them or some of those, but at a lower volume, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District Seven. One of the things that I was wanting to ask is from our Thursday night commission meeting that we had to tonight, it was blue sheeted and pulled. I'm just curious, I have, I have that from our agenda on Thursday night. And the reason that I understand that it was pulled is that there were some changes that needed to be made from the one that was presented and pulled on Thursday night to the one that we currently have now. Can someone point me to what changes were made from that one that was in our agenda on Thursday night and pulled to the one that was presented tonight?
Commissioner, in terms of what was presented tonight, what you have before you tonight is the kind of recommended budget piece. The item that was moved to the next commission meeting is a different item than this. Right, to the eleven. And we will be, we, our auditor confirmed that we, that they would be available. And we are following up with them on some presentation items for clarity for you. But what you have is the document and that's not what you got tonight.
Okay. And Bridget, one of the things that you had mentioned, and I think that we definitely are missing the boat on is grant writers. There's that opportunities out there for us to, to, that's how we can get some additional funding to take care of some of our internal bleeding that we have. And I, I am in favor of funding grant writers so that we can, we can look at capturing some of that money that's out there. Couple other things. When was the last time that the county mill was reduced and by how much?
I don't have that tonight. I can provide that.
We had that in something earlier today. Is that something you can answer, Kathleen? No?
So not of anybody's real recent memory, that's for sure. But I can remember, I do remember that in twenty fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, the city mill levy was reduced by two, two and two.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Okay, so we're saying that subsequent twenty nineteen, that the county lowered their mill? That what you're, somebody saying? You said twenty twenty?
No.
No?
At a county.
So it's, it's been at least
Prior to that.
Twenty sixteen, before twenty sixteen. But, but between twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, we reduced the city mill, which didn't affect Bonner Springs, didn't affect Edwardsville, didn't affect any of those residents by six mills in three years. But we, here we are again, only wanting to attach, attach a half a mill to the, to the county, to the county side. I, I think we got it, we owe it to the county side to, to, to fix that. The other thing that I am interested in is the pilot for Edwardsville. Edwardsville's citizens are paying a pilot to the Kansas City, Kansas General Fund. I don't think that they, they should be doing that. I don't think that they, this was brought up in, in some of our meetings in the past and I was told that Edwardsville doesn't pay a pilot. And then it turns out, we find out, yes, they do. And it goes directly into the Kansas City, Kansas General Fund. And I, I propose that Edwardsville is relieved of that pilot. Also sci-fi, Mayor Kay Hare mentioned in her email to all of us that that was pulled in twenty oh eight and that was a percentage. I don't remember what it was, maybe a half a mill, quarter mill percentage on the county side that went back to Bonner Springs and went back to Edwardsville to go specifically for maintenance and road repair. And in, and in twenty oh eight, that was, that program was pulled from them with no explanation whatsoever. And with no reason why or expectation that it might come back. And I believe that we we probably ought to look at, look back into that also.
I can, on the sci-fi program, yes, I believe, I don't know if it was, it was a one, it was the equivalent of one mil. I think it was around one million for the county. And it was split out between all of the cities. It wasn't just Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, it was all the cities, and all of them got a portion of it. I can't remember what the, what the percentage breakout was. We have that information. And I believe it was maybe for, can't remember if it was for three years possibly, two or three years that we did that. But I can check. I've got more information on the sci-fi program.
Do we know why it was pulled?
I don't remember that it was a long, that it was a long-term program, what I'm recalling. And if it ended in two thousand and eight, it could have been possibly due to the recession at that point. Not sure.
Okay.
But we can, we can follow up on that.
Thank you.
So I wanted to comment on, kind of bring you back to the end of twenty sixteen. So in December of twenty sixteen, we paid off the Legend Star Bonds. And so that, that allowed the amount that of sales tax that was being generated. Became freed up. We didn't have to pay it to bondholders, so it got deposited to operating funds. Of which about nine point six billion of that was deposited into the city and the county and the, city and the county. General funds, okay, nine point six between the two. So. So that was an additional revenue. So beginning in seventeen, the commission decided to reduce the bill. But not do it all at once, do it gradually, but reduce it over time to by six. So they started with two million. And then they started with another two and then another two for a total of six between those three years. Now, the reason they only did it on the city side was because the ten years prior to that. What, you know, we had been experiencing the housing meltdown and the Great Recession of two thousand and eight. And during that whole time between that time up until two thousand and sixteen. Assessed values hadn't grown very much at all. They were very stagnant. And since the city general fund is more dependent on sales tax, they were able to, better able to sustain that, that because. Property tax is a lesser percentage of the total revenue base than it is for the county. The county depends almost sixty-six percent on property tax. So there, that fund was really dependent on property tax, and it was really stagnant. So at the time, the county general fund was just flat out, could not afford to have a mill reduction. As a result of the the star bond payoff. It just wasn't affordable. So that's why the commission approved not to have a no reduction as a result of the star bond payoff at that time. But now property values are increasing, and so the, actually, the tables have turned on the two funds. And now the county general fund is in a better position than the city. So I just, that's all I wanted to say.
With that being said, I'd like to propose a two-mill reduction on the county side for the next three years, two, two, and two. Thanks for stating my case. How many full-time employees are budgeted? Right now? Do we know?
Two thousand one hundred and sixty-four.
And how many do we currently pay? Of those funded positions?
I I don't know that write-off. I would have to find that out.
What's that? Right, full-time, yeah, full-time equivalent.
I don't know that write-off. I would have to find that out for you.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to have that too also, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On the closing, I'm just gonna make a few observations and comments. It's refreshing to see that this commission is having this robust conversation. And debate with our administrator, really just going through this forecast, which is really important, because we are at a crossroads. I think the. Individuals that came at our last commission meeting, and one individual, he said that we've really got to take a hard look at our finances, and his quote was our else. I've got a few questions before I close out. What was last year's budget total minus the, the stimulus funds? Did we know that?
So we definitely had a four hundred and twenty million dollar budget.
And this year's budget is what?
Four hundred and thirty-two million.
Hundred and thirty-two. Okay, so obviously. If you take out the stimulus money, it'd have been about what, three? Hundred and about eighty-something million, am I correct?
I I don't know that the stimulus.
Kathleen?
So so Kathleen is saying it's not part of the, it's not part of the certified fund, so it's not included.
The only portion of the ARPA that was included in the certified funds was the lost revenue portion.
Okay, so, so if you subtract that, what what would that have been as far as our actual?
I think it was on the city side. Once we redid the calculation just this year for two thousand and twenty-two, I think the city was, the city side was about seven million. Overall, the, over the city funds.
Well, I'm just talking about the total budget that we're operating under right now, that was approved last year.
It's a four hundred and twenty million dollar.
Four hundred and twenty, but if you take that seventeen million, is that what you're out?
Yeah, I know it was, it was, it would be seven million, seven million on the city side. I'm trying to remember about six million on the county. So thirteen million for lost revenue over all the certified funds.
Okay, so, so just slightly.
So we have that, taking that off, it'd be about four hundred and seven million.
And now we're up to four thirty?
Four, four thirty-two.
And that's without any revenue replacement?
That's correct. For two thousand and twenty-three, there is no ARPA revenue replacement.
Okay, so that's, that's a huge increase. I guess one thing that I think would be valued for myself and the commission is. It's one thing to say that costs are increasing, which, you know, I'm one of these people, I like to trust you, but I like to verify. And it kind of goes in line with some of what the commissioner is saying. I think more information is better than just having generalizations about cost. I'd really like to know where these cost increases are coming from, what they look like, and have our department has really done their due diligence to keep costs down. I think that's really important. What are we spending our money on? Because again, I've said it at commission meetings before. This year's budget, four hundred and twenty million dollars, I can look around this county. I don't see four hundred and twenty million dollars worth of anything when you talk about potholes. Failing infrastructure and a, and a variety of other things. And and I'm not just talking, I know personnel costs really tie into that, but I think we need to really start looking, what are we spending our money on and what does that look like? And can we do a better job at the executive management levels to prioritize what's really important? I know that staff often wants this commission to prioritize, but I think we need to start pushing back on staff and saying. On the lines of what Commissioner Kane indicated, what, what is necessary, what's a want and and what is a need? And what does that look like? I can tell you on. Being on the police department over thirty-two years, there's been several instances where we did have budgetary constraints. And we were tasked with slashing our budget. I haven't heard that at all as far as a forecast. If we know that our consultants and we know that you all are saying and projecting that we're on the road to bankruptcy. This commission needs to have information available to them so they can make some hard decisions to keep us solvent. And part of that is, is I think that our executives need to talk, looking at, okay, where can we cut costs? And what does that look like? And what are we spending our money on? How can we run a more efficient and effective government? And then I'm, someone mentioned it about personnel. When you talk about personnel, a lot of that, our cost goes toward personnel. I'm one of these advocates of streamlined governments, and I say that because I worked here and I know how things can get bloated for a variety of reasons. So I say that our department heads need to say, okay, what, just like we ask our commissioners, what are the essentials, services and priorities? What are the essential positions and priorities that may be available to them? And then look at how they can streamline. I don't think that five percent to ten percent ask, and it's just an ask from our department heads. Where can you see five percent to ten percent cut in cost to bring about the savings that could help this commission? Relieve some of the the burden that they have on on trying to decide. What, what is essential for for our residents? So I would like to see something like that on cost. I do believe that when you go in line with Commissioner Ramirez and Commissioner Davis, and I believe one more commissioner. They need more information, and so I'm going to ask our administrator, I know we had that, the twenty-fifth, and I think this ties in line with Commissioner Bynum. I'm gonna ask our administrator, we need to push this out, and this commission actually needs more time to go through documents. To look at proposals from our executive team as far as where can some of the hard decisions be made as far as recommendation for cuts? Kind of goes in line with Commissioner McKeonan and Commissioner Townsend. We've got to say no to something, and we've got to decide as a commission what essential services are. We already know what the priorities are. But within those priorities that you've identified very well, based on what this commission wants, okay, what is essential? What can we live with and what can we live without? What do we need to push out and what do we need to make a priority within this? So I think streamlining our government and cutting costs has to be considered. We've got a lot of vacant positions. What does that look like as far as cost savings to go in line with? These executives and 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 top managers in government here at the Unified Government, looking at where they can cut costs. Some of those might be personnel. What can they live without? How can we infuse technology and 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 maybe different things to bring about the same level of services? These are the conversations that I just really haven't heard brought forward. I also believe that your administrator needs information to realign and restructure this unified government. Especially at the middle management and upper management levels with the, some of these higher-paying position. I'm getting feedback that there are, in certain areas, you might have three supervisors for seven people. Is that really the best efficient way to utilize? I know throughout my career, I've heard and I've seen things throughout my career when I was an employee of the Unified Government, where there were early outs. We did buyouts as a way to bring about cost savings and streamline government. I haven't heard those conversations, and the reason why I bring all this up is, is because this commission is going to have to have recommendations. And proposals to make some hard decisions to keep this county solvent. And I don't see that. All I see is continue to tax and spend and hire more people. And you say that that's because we've got to keep services the same. One of the things I brought forward early in the year, I believe it was in March. When I recommended this commission revenue neutral. Part of that strategy for me to recommend that was I wanted to make sure that we operated and force this staff. To operate at the same level of funding going into twenty twenty-three as we have in twenty twenty-two, which would have forced the various things that I'm talking about. When you talk about stringlining, cost-cutting, and things of those nature. And I think we have to have the political will at this point to be able to do those things. A lot of consolidation of duplicated services that have been identified, not just by our auditors, but by other people that I've talked to in the community. Where can we find cost savings there? I'm really concerned. When I see us going in a direction that that, like Commissioner Johnson mentioned, where we're headed down a road to bankruptcy. And I've seen other communities, and I don't want to put any other cities out there, because this, our problem isn't their problem, but I've seen that happen. I do agree with our administrator. One area that we need to look at is is economic development. I believe that that is a bright star right here in Wyandotte County, just where we sit geographically. We have got to remove the bureaucracy on doing business here in Wyandotte County when it comes to economic development, and that, and that's my opinion. And we've really got to have a clear strategy on bringing developments into Wyandotte County. Investing in the disinvesting and offering responsible incentives where it's necessary, but also. Not giving incentives and giving way to the form of these big corporations that aren't going to pay their fair share and not really lend anything of value to the residents of Wyandotte County when you talk about tax relief. It's kind of concerning to me when I hear eleven dollars, I believe, is is the number a year. That's a, that's a McDonald's Happy Meal for one person homeowner. I I just think that's unreasonable. My proposal was eight point five. Meals, not to reduce taxes or the mill levy, but to prevent a tax increase. And I believe that Vaughn H. and Ms. Vaughn H., I'm sorry, our CFO, had a proposal that was available. That could get us there responsibly. I'd like for this commission to see that and look at those options that were shared with me. I believe one of our commissioners, I believe it was Commissioner Davis, mentioned the C M I P. I think this commission needs to know what projects are funded, which ones are out there that haven't been completed. And then really prioritize moving forward on which, on the funding streams moving forward. We've just got a lot of issues, and so I say all this respectfully to the work that you all have done, because you all have done a good job, and to our administrator. Is that this commission is going to need more information, is going to be, need to be more detailed, we're going to need more time. To really allow this commission to make an informed decision at this pivotal point. To where we know, and it's all out there in the public venue, that if we don't get it right today and move in a different direction. And forego the patterns of the past, we are setting this community up for failure. And to me, as this mayor, I don't want that to happen on my watch. It's unacceptable, and I believe that we have to do better for the residents of Wyandotte County. And I'm not saying that I have all the answers and I'm right. That's why we have a commission. Because we need to work together, and I'm willing to work with this commission, staff, our administrator, on finding real solutions to these problems. But hard decisions are going to have to be made, and I believe that deep cuts are going to have to be realized. To bring us to a point of stabilization and solvency here in the unified government moving forward. And it's not going to happen in this budget, but we've got to start developing a strategy over time. So two thousand and twenty-seven doesn't put us to the point of cheatering on the point of bankruptcy. So Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. Well-stated in reference to the cuts, and I appreciate my colleagues calling for a mill reduction. It's something that has been discussed. You know, Mayor, it was suggested maybe five percent across-the-board budget cut to all departments. I don't know what five percent would would generate, but if I look at the four hundred billion plus, it would be roughly around twenty million, if I'm correct in my quick math. Without having to dig into our reserves, I would hope that we could find a five percent reduction cut somewhere. In our departments. I believe it's, it's. Cap, I think, I think we're capable of doing that before either the department heads make those decisions or the commission can make those decisions. And it's not the best way to do things, being across-the-board cut, because it hits some departments harder than it does others. However, it keeps us from digging into the ending balance if we were to do that. Now, we had a whole year in which we could do that. Now we're with the last. Five months, I believe, of the fiscal year, so a five percent cut would be more like a ten percent cut towards the end of the year. But actually, we could, we only need about, unless we want to add the mill reductions to that, we could get by with a ten million dollar reduction in the budget. And not have to dig into ending balance. So you do a five percent cut, we're there. And I don't think it's, I I think it's very possible. Tough decisions have to be made. Don't, don't buy the new car this year. Don't buy the rest of the stationery, use what you have, whatever, whatever it takes. Those are things that need to be looked at, and I appreciate the the mayor bringing this up. I don't want to spend ending balance. Because I think there's other ways to save money, and I would hope that my colleagues would, would, would consider some of the cuts that need to be made, but. But five across the board cuts, easiest way to get it there, but it's not the best for all departments because it affects some departments harder than others. So here we are. We said last year, we wouldn't even discuss the mill levy this late in in the budget. We said that last year when we were moving forward for a mill reduction. Here we are now, we're we're not even really talking about a mill reduction. Eleven dollars isn't much, but you you all stated something in your documents tonight of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars average value of property in Wyandotte County. It that that concerns me greatly. I would hope that when we go back to the assessor and I talk to the Department of Revenue. I hope that not the average price of our property. I if with the increases that we've had in valuation, the with the housing stock I've seen in the community, hundred and twenty-five. If that's the case, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't have an affordable housing problem. Those houses are out there for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If that's the case, if that's our average. That's that's what's hurting us more than anything. And I don't mind seeing an increase in valuation. But with that, we have to be steady on how we handle the mill. So thank you, Mayor, for your comments and colleagues. Thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you. I'd also request that I know that it was late night, but what's being left out of this conversation too is the pilot. And that conversation, I would like for that to be brought to the table so this commission can debate that and make an informed decision on which direction to go with the pilot. I think the recommendation then was to separate business from residential. And then if that wasn't acceptable, to at least look at our lowest income residents here in Wyandotte County and see if we can provide some type of relief in the pilot. But so that's one of the things I'd like for this commission to debate as well. So Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. One last thing. This was done routinely in the past with the budget presentation. One of the things I would like to see is the pie chart that we used to get that showed how our dollar is spent. And it goes kind of to what Commissioner Burrows mentioned, if you're talking about cutting. Or even not talking about cutting, but where is and how is the money spent? It used to show so much for parks, so much for public safety, so much for the other things. I'd like to see that pie chart when we have before we have our next meeting. And that kind of gives us a global of where we're spending our money now. Not the most detailed, but I found it helpful. And kind of a glossary to get into a more detailed review. Thank you.
And on that note, Commissioner Townsend, I believe Commissioner Davis brought the question up. I know that administration has been given direction to meet with the other taxing entities, and I believe that's still on the table. So hopefully before this budget process is brought before you for consideration. Some type of disposition on those communications to be brought forward for this commission to at least have knowledge and be able to include in in making an informed decision.
Well, I think that I think probably our staff could already have that. It just wasn't included here. But so that whenever we have our next meeting, I guess, which is Thursday about budget before, then we can just take a look at that, have that available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez. Standby. I believe we're having technical difficulties. We've been told. So just stand by real quick as we check on that. Okay, I apologize to the public. Our U G T V is down, but those you can connect would like to can connect to Zoom as we as we wrap up. And I believe that that'll be optimized later. For review for those of you that have missed something. So we've got a comment from our, go ahead, Debbie.
I just wanted to update Commissioner Burrows that we just checked the median household average value of a home is a hundred and sixty-two. So I think we we may have looked, we may have referenced a hundred and twenty-five. So we'll we'll update that. But the average home price was a hundred and sixty-two. And that was from our appraiser in a report earlier this year.
Oh, I appreciate that because we keep using a hundred thousand dollars as a reference point. Then we're using two hundred thousand on the tax side. Then I see in your report, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar value. And we hear the affordable housing discussion. That is affordable housing. And if the average cost of a home is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we don't have an affordable housing issue in Wyandotte County. To the extent that some may perceive we do. So that's why I don't, that that number just kind of raised my antennas a little bit. I'm not so sure. It wouldn't even be just a wee bit higher, but I I appreciate you looking into that, Debbie. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. I'm sorry, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very quick comment. That personally for me, I can't have an opinion or have a debate on the pilot until I can get a hands, until I know what our base budget looks like, what has been recommended to us. There's a lot of information that's still going to give to us. Until I know all that information and comb through it. I can't have a discussion about the pilot until then, until what's been presented. So I just wanted to, I would like, I want us to do something in that realm, but I need to have a handle on our base budget first.
Thank you. And just to bring some clarity that what was proposed with the pilot in separating residential for business? And that was a recommendation from staff as the most optimized way to present to the commission to do things. It doesn't, it doesn't mandate that you lower the pilot anytime this year. What it does is it gives you the option to be, if you choose. To be able to lower residential separate from business. If you choose, if you don't choose, you could lower them both the same. But right now, they're they're combined. That was brought up basically, like I said, to give you all an option. Either now or later, you can either combine it or you can do it separately. But from my understanding, you couldn't do both together responsibly. If you just lower residential. If that's the choice that the commission chose to do now or later, it has the smallest impact to the U G general fund as opposed to business, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, is about seventy percent. When you talk about the pilot. And so that was the recommendation that was brought forward. So it didn't mandate that the commission take any action on lowering it or raising it. It just allowed you to have options moving forward. And so in the interest of time, thank you. I think we've heard tonight from this commission that they are on board with looking at ways to cut costs and streamline this government. Thank you, administrator. Thank you, staff, for the work that you've done. And thank you, commission, for having this robust conversation. I'm looking forward to having hearing these ongoing talks. So I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call. Johnson.
Hi.
Kane. Markley.
Hi.
Stites. Davis.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Burrows. Townsend. McKeonan.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
The vote is ten to zero. The motion carries.